All meetings ordered. Go call both please.
Alderman Persick?
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Here.
Alderman Joe Van Dyne?
Here.
Alderman Evans?
Here.
Alderman Kerwin?
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Here.
Alderman Tudor?
Here.
Alderman Studer?
Here.
All present, you may be formed.
The regular meeting of the Wilmington City Council on December 16th, 2014 is now in session. Council, you got approval limited to December 2nd for you.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the December 2nd, 2014 meeting. Motion by Alderman Hall, do you have a second? Second by Alderman Studer. Go call both please.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Seven yes, one abstaining, motion passes.
All right, Mayor's report. One item tonight, and I'm very happy to say I'm glad we're doing this tonight. First off, as many of you may know, I'm wearing purple suits. I have to tell two people that if you guys won a state championship, don't do this in a purple suit. And I think Nick has already got dibs on it after the night, right Nick?
Yeah.
But hey, one of the things that signifies color purple when I was looking is as far as entertainment. And you guys, man, you guys entertained us all season long, from the very beginning to the last four seconds, I think everybody in town was kind of holding their breath when Jordan made that kick. And I think 12,000 hands went up when that kick went through the uprights. So it was very exciting to see. We're very proud you guys took that championship. Not only did you do it for the high school, for WHS, but you guys did it for the entire city of Wilmington. We're very proud of that. And you guys did it with skill, and with discipline, and determination. And for that, we'd like to present you with some awards tonight. We're very glad that you came out here tonight. I know some of you are missing, and what we're gonna do is we're gonna present these. I'm gonna come around, and we're gonna call everybody out individually, and I'm gonna have Alderman Studer, if he could come around and help me with this as well. Really appreciate it. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna start from the top. We're gonna start from the guy that kind of put this all together, and I know he's probably been dreaming about this for 20-plus years, the skipper, Coach Jeff Ranks. All right, second in command, Coach Barry Salvo.
Thank you.
Coach Rob Murphy's probably wrestling, all right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Coach Alred, Russell Alred.
He's not here.
All right.
Removing Jake, and I know.
Hey, we're all right, we're all right. Coach Mark Langish?
Oh, basketball?
Woo! Multi-game. I know this guy's here, the special teams guy.
That's right.
Coach Bob Bowser?
Yeah.
The calmest person out there that last four seconds. Coach Chad Farrell here?
No, we got one more coach, and it'd be Coach Barbic.
All right. Coach Barbic. Mason here?
Basketball.
Basketball! Should do this like on Sunday at 9:00 in the morning.
Nick's wrestling, right?
Nick's wrestling, right? Nick Hawkins?
Wrestling.
All right, we'll start with this guy, number four, Joe Mann. Stevie, basketball Steve there? Magic Foot, is he here? Jordan Star?
Yep.
Magic Foot. Jeff Tredman. Jacob Scellis?
Nope.
Oh, Jacob.
Dylan Wallace.
Dylan Wallace. Augie, Dawson here?
Dawson's wrestling.
Oh, Dawson's wrestling. Kevin Hox?
Yep.
Owen Weaver?
Wrestling.
Oh.
Basketball's the last one.
Tyler Breiver?
Yep.
Noah Dwyer? Noa here?
Nope.
Sam Jones?
Basketball.
All right, Nick Williams. I'll put it on a hanger when I'm done, all right? Jay Capwell? All right, Mason. Seth Swift?
Wrestling.
Derek's here. Derek Hertz. Brad Nowak. Dylan Nolan. Caleb Gugis. Wrestling. Robert Chills. Kyle Davis. There we go. Kyle Hall. All right, RJ. Basketball? There we go. John Legas. Tyler Golson. Basketball. James Cox. Best way. Frank Castillo. Zach Yule. Justin Longrich. Bailey Boswell. Angelo Castneri. Alex Aron. Ben Studer. That's it. That's it. Thanks, guys, for an outstanding season, keeping us entertained throughout the full year. Congratulations to all of you. It's an honor to present to you guys tonight. We're gonna take like a five-minute recess if anybody wants to talk to you, or you guys delay, so we don't have to go through the other stuff. Coach, I'll have you sent to the school tomorrow.
Thank you for a very classy situation here, presenting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. All right, we'll get back to business. Citizens comments, do we have any citizens comments tonight?
They're all gone.
All right, planning and zoning commission, they have a special meeting scheduled for December 18th, 2014, at 6:00. And then our next regular scheduled meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January 8th. Taking a special meeting, is that in regards to Project Turkey?
Yes, it is.
All right, community reports, building grounds, health, safety, Alderman Persick, Alderman Van Dyne?
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, January 14th, 2015, at 6:30 PM.
Water, sewer, space, and alleys, Alderman Studer, Alderman Kerwin?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the recommendation made by the city engineer for payment on invoice number three in the amount of $39,088.75 from Robinson Engineering for the intersection improvement project at Route 53, Kankakee River Drive, and Wilmington Piattone Road.
Motion by Alderman Kerwin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Persick, any discussion?
Is this the final payment, or what?
This is not the final payment, this is for the actual design engineering paper. This comes out of the EDP fund. Any further discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-01, an ordinance for the levy and collection of taxes for the city of Wilmington for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2015, and ending April 30th, 2016.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-02, an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2014 to pay the principal of an interest on $1,345,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2006A of the city of Wilmington, Will County, Illinois.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-02, an ordinance abating the tax heretofore
levy for the year 2014 to pay the principal of an interest on $1,345,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2006A of the city of Wilmington, Will County, Illinois.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-03, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the city of Wilmington Special Service Area Number One for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2015, and ending April 30th, 2016.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion?
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-04, an ordinance setting the reasonable rates and charges for water and wastewater services for 2015.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion?
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-05, an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2014 to pay the principal of an interest on $1,345,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2006A of the city of Wilmington, Will County, Illinois.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion?
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-06, an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2014 to pay the principal of an interest on $1,345,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2006A of the city of Wilmington, Will County, Illinois.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-07, an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2014 to pay the principal of an interest on $1,345,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2006A of the city of Wilmington, Will County, Illinois.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion?
Are we gonna tie all these together?
Well, we're doing them separately.
We have separate.
We can, but we're gonna do them separate for clarification. Any further discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-08, an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2014 to pay the principal of an interest on $1,345,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2006A of the city of Wilmington, Will County, Illinois.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
No.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
No.
Alderman Kerwin?
No.
Alderman Persick?
No.
No. Mr. Mayor, we need you for the timer.
I'll vote yes. And I think it would be kind of courtesy sometimes when people vote, know that at least they stay quiet and voting, so everybody can understand the reason behind. But I vote yes.
We have five yes, four no, motion passes.
I move to approve the recommendation made by the city engineer to release the 10% retentions and make payment to the following contractors for their work at the new police department. Deconstruction in the amount of $2,322.91. SAI construction, $8,448.74. Mancuso Concrete, $9,333.38.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Evans. Any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve the recommendation made by the city engineer to release the 10% retentions and make payment to the following contractors for their work at the new police department. Deconstruction in the amount of $2,322.91. SAI construction, $8,448.74. Mancuso Concrete, $9,333.38.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Evans. Any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve the recommendation made by the city engineer to release the 10% retentions and make payment to the following contractors for their work at the new police department. Deconstruction in the amount of $2,322.91. SAI construction, $8,448.74. Mancuso Concrete, $9,333.38.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Evans. Any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-07, an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2014 to pay the principal of an interest on $1,345,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2006A of the city of Wilmington, Will County, Illinois.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion?
Are we gonna tie all these together?
Well, we're doing them separately.
We have separate.
We can, but we're gonna do them separate for clarification. Any further discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Will County 911 Emergency Telephone System Board for the funding of a 911 surcharge and reallocation and the authorized execution of the intergovernmental agreement upon legal review.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor? Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Okay, my turn. Okay, I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Will County 911 Emergency Telephone System Board for the funding of a 911 surcharge and reallocation and the authorized execution of the intergovernmental agreement upon legal review.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-08, an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2014 to pay the principal of an interest on $1,345,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2006A of the city of Wilmington, Will County, Illinois.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-09, an ordinance for the levy and collection of taxes for the city of Wilmington for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2015, and ending April 30th, 2016.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-02, an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2014 to pay the principal of an interest on $1,345,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2006A of the city of Wilmington, Will County, Illinois.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-02, an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2014 to pay the principal of an interest on $1,345,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2006A of the city of Wilmington, Will County, Illinois.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-03, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the city of Wilmington Special Service Area Number One for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2015, and ending April 30th, 2016.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-12-16-03, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the city of Wilmington Special Service Area Number One for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2015, and ending April 30th, 2016.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.[847.25]
Service Area Number One, for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand fifteen, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kirby Hall. Any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number fourteen dash twelve dash sixteen dash zero four, an ordinance setting the reasonable rates and charges for water and wastewater services for two thousand fifteen.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Stuter, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
No.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
No.
Alderman Kirwin?
No.
Alderman Persick?
No.
No. Mr. Mayor, we need you for the tiebreaker.
Um, I'll vote yes, and I think it would be kind of courtesy sometimes when people vote, know that at least they stay quiet and voting, so everybody can understand the reason behind it. But I vote yes.
We have five yes, four no, motion passes.
I move to approve the recommendation made by the city engineer to release the ten percent retentions and make payment to the following contractors for their work at the new police department. Deconstruction in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-one cents. S.A.I.C.R. construction, eight thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Mancuso Concrete, nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Evans. Any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kirwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Okay, my turn. Okay, I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Will County nine-one-one emergency telephone system board for the funding of a nine-one-one surcharge and their, and uh, reallocation and the authorized execution of the intergovernmental agreement upon legal review.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Sixth Amendment to the annexation agreement among the city and Ridge Logistics Parks One L.L.C., a Delaware Limited Liability Company, uh, R.P., R.L.P.I., Ridgeport Logistics Center Property Owner Association, and Illinois Non-for-Profit Corporation, R.L.C.P.O.A., and Ridgeport Logistics Center One L.L.C., a Delaware Limited Liability Company, R.L.C.I., R.L.P.I., R.L.C.P.O.A., and R.L.C.I.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Stuter, any discussion?
Are we gonna tie all these together?
Well, we're doing them separately.
We have separate.
We can, but we're gonna do them separate for clarity. Any further discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement among the city and Ridge Logistics Park One L.L.C., a Delaware Limited Liability Company, R.L.P.I. Ridgeport Logistics Center Property Owners Association and Illinois Non-for-Profit Corporation. The association, R.L.P.I., and the association are hereafter collectively referred to as the, uh, initial owners, and Ridgeport Development Services L.L.C., a Delaware Limited Liability Company.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second? Any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Kirwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Seventh Amendment to the Ridgeport Agreement among the city and Ridge Logistics Parks One L.L.C., a Delaware Limited Liability Company. Ridge Park, Ridge Lego Partners L.L.C., a Delaware Limited Liability Company. New Owner One and Ridge Management Team L.L.C., a Delaware Limited Liability Company, Ridge Management.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled, next regular scheduled meeting is Tuesday, January twentieth, two thousand fifteen, at six P.M.
Orders like Alderman Kirby Hall, Alderman Evans. Mayor, the new scheduled meeting is Tuesday, January thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, at six P.M. Personnel effective bargaining, Alderman Larry Hall and Alderman Persick.
That's a report, Mayor.
City manager's report, Mr. Grant.
Hey, I'm gonna defer it over to the chief of police, he has to give a report.
I was gonna ask him next, but he didn't do anything. Team, I'm gonna do it. See, this will be a very short call, y'all know this, we're going to have the police department trying to bring up a few highlights of the last few months, three months, actually. One of the things that I talked about during the interview process when we first started was bringing more visibility to the police department, and we've done some special things around, um, and we've done that. You've noticed a lot more response from the community of the amount of police officers that they see, uh, so I think it's been a very positive thing for us. In addition, in the last few months, uh, the officers have written just about eight hundred citations, and we've noticed a small decrease in accidents, which is a goal, of course, there've been traffic enforcement, there's reduced accidents, so that's, that's happened. We have a new officer that's graduated from the police academy this Friday, Officer Dan Shashinsky, who will then start field training following Monday. He'll be a full-time officer. We had a parking officer, Greg Eggerbrett, that started last week, he's in field training currently. We have two spots in the academy for January, those officers have been contacted by the police department, they're taking their site, and they'll have a power test right now, and they will have the power test on December twenty-second. Uh, the computers that we ordered have arrived finally last week, uh, they were taken to the law court Tuesday, yesterday, who have offered to do the entire setup for your charge cost, that is saving us about twenty-five hundred dollars in I.P. costs, so they're doing that for us, they should be done tomorrow, they told us, uh, and then we'll start getting them installed into vehicles. The police department, a real quick update on that, the new police department, started to actually look like a building inside, uh, the flooring's being completed, all of the detention area, uh, equipment has been painted now, electric stairs are painted, the cell doors, the cell beds, uh, the tables that go back there, so that's all getting done, the ceiling tiles, and a bit of a huge difference, so I think that we can actually say that sometime in the next month or so, we should actually be in the process of moving into station. There's still some minds on the punch list, we need to go through, be interacted, but uh, for the most part, we'll be able to at least be moving in sometime very soon. One of the, uh, things that we also started two months ago was the officers doing both business checks and premise checks. Difference of those two things, the business check is done when the business is open, the business, uh, they're actually working, so the officer, officers that are, uh, on shift during those times will stop in those businesses and walk in and make contact with somebody who works there, I go to the customer, store, uh, just to say hello, let them know that we're, we're in there. So, the path, I'm sorry, premise checks are done when the businesses are closed, uh, in the evening hours. Those checks are done mostly on midnight shift, uh, twice a night for each business. So, in those two months we've been doing this, uh, the officers have done business checks while the business is running, uh, almost eight hundred times, and we have done nearly fourteen thousand premise checks on the midnight shift. So, that is some of the reason that people are actually seeing police officers more often, you know, because, uh, you know, we're holding people accountable, they're holding themselves accountable, they actually enjoy doing it, uh, you know, you never know when you're trying to, uh, lead people in a direction that they weren't going in previously, how they'll react, and I can tell you it's been very positive, uh, very, very happy with all of our personnel at the police department, uh, they have all stepped up and, uh, wanna do the right thing, as I said, they're all excited about what they're doing now, and seem to be coming up with new ideas that they're bringing to me, uh, that have all been very good so far, uh, we've given a few different, uh, strategies to make them more visible at different times of the day, and in the evening hours as well, uh, you're going to see a new vehicle that we just, uh, received, it was purchased by Ridgeport, um, we're going back to having light bars on top of squad cars, yeah, because it does make it a little bit more visible. So, you'll see that the vehicle actually has arrived, uh, it should be being built in the next two weeks. Uh, our shop, it does, it is very backed up, because of course, with the government surplus purchases, they all come in at one time, so every agency is trying to get a part of it built at once, so, but it'll be on the street very soon. I think that's all I have, uh, with the, the new officers, we'll get, uh, the academy in March, um, we'll be up to full staff. Yeah, I would think, uh, one of the other goals we had was to increase our education within the department. Sergeant McTee graduated from Northwestern University School of Police Staffing Command this past Friday, uh, it's a ten-week intensive leadership school, uh, he finished, uh, he already has a lot of ideas, uh, I was at his graduation up in Skokie Friday, and he had a list of things he's already thought about, which is good, that's what we send to school, uh, to call the blue ideas, so he's very motivated and ready to come out and figure out running.
So, how many officers will I think this will have?
That, well, once we get the other two out in March, sometime in the spring, it'll go up to fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yes, include myself, for fourteen, fourteen.
I don't know if you could talk about the protocol on, on the, um, school incident, what's your assessment on it?
I think it will handle very well, uh, the school, we've been participating at the school since I've been here, like, three months, they do regular training, uh, regular, I shouldn't say, well, this training, but they do drills, lockdown drills, uh, intruder drills, and we participate with them, and, uh, the incident at the school was handled very well, by the time we arrived, they had already checked most of the school office, anything that was out of the ordinary. I know there's, had the old school training of thought, was if there's a bomb threat, evacuate a building, that is not true. It's improved in that, if there is a bomb, it's three times more likely to be outside of the building, uh, in school incidents, it's twice as likely to be in the hallway, not in the classroom, so that is a reason why we would rather keep students in the classroom until we determine if there is something there. Also, if there is something there, we want to make sure that if we do evacuate, they evacuate away from that item, not toward it, so it was handled very well, we knew very early to the incident who the, who the suspect was, uh, we were able to check and see what was in his locker, his backpack, and so on, so we were very confident that there was not a substantiated threat. I think that's what was good, understanding that the old school of thought, it's not there anymore, it's changed, because even when, uh, discussions I had with the chief was, my, my thought process was the old school of thought, when people were going around saying bomb threat, I said, there's no way to be bomb threat, or they would evacuate to the school, we now understand that, you know, they don't do that, because, like, when we had the discussions, if the child realizes that they can get out of school, calling in a bomb threat, we've got a test coming up, who knows what's gonna happen to the school. I think I happened to be sitting in a school up north where they had like four or five in a week, the parents were going, hey, hold on. Right. The detective, you know, happens all over, but, you know, also, an incident had happened, real live incidents, Columbine, you know, the inventors and that, and said, we're outside waiting for the kids to come out of the school, pull the fire alarm, so they'd come out, so they couldn't shoot them. So, you know, there's a lot of things we've, we had to look at, uh, certainly, without question, if we felt it to be a credible threat, if we found something that was out of place, was near wrong, we would take, follow the proper protocol, in this case, that protocol was followed, so, um, I, plus the school district, they've, they've done really good drop training and practicing, and that was a huge help for us.
Chief?
Yes.
If I remember in the past, my children go to Saint Rose, and if I remember that when there was an incident in any public school, the Saint Rose school was also notified,